I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and welcome to our July 11, 2016 meeting. The approval of the agenda.
Mr. President, can we have a deal like watching strangers?
And with that said, we have a correction on the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting for June 13th, but I do believe it is the 12th.
No, it's the 12th. The 12th was a Sunday, the 13th is correct.
Yes, I'll change around these. We'll set them. So it's up. Motion to approve the June 12th.
13th.
I'll get that. All right. I'm doing the unit I vote for.
Are we in the right month?
We're in the right month. That's all right. The June 13th, 2016.
That was the motion, right?
Yes. Support. Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
Yeah. Pardon.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Have we approved the agenda or do you approve the minutes for the regular meeting?
The minutes.
We gotta approve the agenda first.
We didn't approve the agenda.
Oh, I thought we did. Sorry. Back up. Let's go through and approve the agenda. With the exclusion of no, not except the other.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda presented by Detective Donovan, July 11, 2016.
The board. Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Dick.
No.
Paul.
Now, if we can move forward to the pool of the minutes for my regular council meeting June 13, 2016.
Order.
Well, yeah, so that's a motion to support and approve. So pardon, yes. We have to, yes. Pardon, yes. Dick.
No.
Paul.
Yes. The approval of the special council meeting of June 2nd, 2016. For a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the special council meeting dated June 2nd, 2016.
Roll call, please. Support.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes. Yes. The last one is the special council meeting for June 28, 2016.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 28, 2016.
Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Paul.
The treasuries report, good for she? Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the treasury report for July 11, 2016.
If you're support.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Dick.
No.
Paul.
Yes. Repels and transfers? Any questions?
On the second page, Jack, maybe you can answer. I don't see in dollars amount, I'm seeing in two ones, two point five. Why don't you stop looking at something?
I want to give you a second.
One more question on that since we can't see what actually is there. Should hold off and prove this is an emergency meeting.
Are we all in here? Yes. Okay. Yeah. Didn't include it. I have no idea what they've done. Second page.
I'll make the chance.
I don't know if someone just.
Everybody's in agreement with that?
Yeah.
As well said, the next part of the meeting is the public comment. Please, this should be agenda item.
Mr. Paul, I have questions, but the first question that I have is there was a public notice in the citizen newspaper Saturday. You saw it, you didn't know it, you have your administrator here and the attorney that could verify this now. You have a public notice for the proposed changes to the zoning map, which is scheduled July 25th at 7:00 p.m. And I want to verify the parcel number with you to verify that this parcel number is the parcel that's on Eagle and Sheen Drive.
I don't have documentation. It's got on the agenda.
I couldn't verify that.
Then I'm going to suggest something, and I want to make this public. If the parcel number is incorrect, then you need to re-publish this in the paper. You need to do that. Legally, you have to do that. So I'm asking, I'm asking that you verify that with your administrator, and if it is wrong, please re-publish it. The next item that I have to ask you about, it is on your green sheet, and my questions are on the first page. First one is on check number 10-10323, with a truck repair bill of $974.35. Was that pre-approved, or how did that, did the council approve that before that was completed? The next question I have, and Mr. McKenna's sitting here, and I'm going to ask him if he could please verify this. Every month, we see his name on the check register for his fees. Do we, are these the running fees that we're paying for this litigation that's going on with the 17 plaintiffs? Or are we going to get a separate bill from Mr. McKenna regarding this big lawsuit? Anybody? Do you have any answer?
I don't know. Do you think else?
Yes, I should. You have Chase Card Services here, and that is check number 10317 for $1,224.66. Do we know where and what we're paying for there?
I'm sorry, what was that again?
I said everything was on page one.
Page one.
10317 is the check number. Do we know what we're paying for on that, or what that's all about? But my big thing is, is also to find out if we've gotten these preapprovals that we're paying out over $500 for repairs. The second thing is, the bill that Mr. McKenna is charging the village for this lawsuit, I want to know where we're at with that. I want to know what we're paying and how much we're paying. Is this a running tally from month to month that's being paid for for this lawsuit, or are we going to get dollars for the huge bill? That needs to be, that needs to be told to the public. Thank you.
Brooke. Justice County, the sheriff's department report. Questions, comments? Reports from the street administrator, 9/11, water race parks.
Repairing water plants, repairing catch bases, I think it was about seven years ago. Long we hope to go to the fall, but it's still, so we had to fix it. Wire line was done up, or the drain line's been done up to the fire hall. I don't think the mud jacket, or the filth been put in the line yet, but it's got it where the water's not going through the man's property before that drains out. Just before the 4th of July. Other than that, they're just fixing them one at a time. Have trouble getting some of that. Couple of guts, driveway's got to be repaired in there. Can't give anybody a bit.
Bill, I thought I put the last pipe to the ground for the lake here. That's it.
Parks and Recreation.
Shannon, was at that meeting.
Did you, did you want to talk that?
Yeah, I'll do that if you'd like.
Okay. Yeah, well, you had mentioned that you, that you were willing to, so.
Parks and Rec, we had a meeting last week down at the park. Had a chance to look at what's down there. We walked around a bit after the meeting. We worked on a mission statement. I think the manager of the report that we're at the quick beginning. And we certainly would like a lot more public input, like people to, just feel free to come on down. Usually, we meet in this room on the first Thursday of the month at 5:30. We met a couple times down at the park. If there is a switch, there'll be a notice on the door upstairs. Maybe here too, upstairs, because we like to meet in the park. But like I say, this is the beginning, and we really like to have input, and people like to have you show up. Anything else?
Just that, other things that we talked about, like park improvements and things like that, and getting, getting more involved with, with council to maybe have a budget line for parks and rec projects that we could run by council and have either approved or denied to make, instead of it just being a line on the agenda, make it more of a topic of discussion.
One thing at the park, the water, the back check valve line, Palmer to hook it up for me, we could go down there and put a check valve in the shed, and it would, we think we could make it work the way that's supposed to, and it would get the water to it. Right now, when you shut it off, you lose all your pressure, you gotta work to fill that up. Well, it's out there for two years, and we've been running, and they've been a lot of watering, but the valve's stuck open, so it doesn't close. And that's hard to do, why, just to put one in and see if it is going to work before you spend all that money to pull pipe and do that, because if it's a well done to pass your waste, but we can put one in there for cheap, not that the sheriff's job, all this, from not cheap to pull a pipe.
Do you think it would exceed $30 if it was plastic, I think it'd be pretty easy to do.
Well, if you want it done, we could have done. I told my friend that, you called one of those, I'd do it, and see what people on the board line.
And I do have the water sample bottle, so if we're ready, you can go ahead and take one of those for us, test it. And then, Mr. Rick?
The concern that I have with the Park and Recs is that we had a few trees that got planted without approval from the council. I still don't know who was responsible for that, whether it was the actual Parks and Recs committee, or the Goodrich Volunteers that decided to do that. I've not seen anything in our paperwork stating that we paid for the trees, so again, I don't know if we paid for those. There's electrical lines that were ran that was not discussed with the council. I understand it was for the good type of Goodrich. But that being said, I would be looking at this council for a motion or making a friendly request to Goodrich Volunteers and the Parks and Recs community, and they seem to be crossing over with each other and not knowing who's doing what, that we spend no more money or give them any more money until there is the actual formal plan of attack of what they want done with that park. We do have a drain project that's going to be coming down through there, supposedly, there's no definite information on that. I do know the park's probably going to get tore up. Again, I don't know that factual, haven't been told that, but that's what I'm hearing from Scudder and the council. Again, so I don't know why we're spending money planting trees, if you will, and there's been no approval or no set agenda on that.
That's from the volunteers, though, that was done. We don't really have any control over the volunteers.
That park is the village's park.
But it's also, they're working with the DPW supervisor, and he has the authority to do that. And there was only one.
Many should not, their project, but the whole monument.
There was only one tree that they purchased, the other one was a plant tree that was moved.
Two trees appeared that we don't know where they came from, two little.
Unless I'm missing another tree that was planted out there, there's not many small trees.
People were saying, like, those little, like, Mugo pines, or whatever they're called, they're, they would be.
Korean pine or something.
Yeah. They're, that was talked about moving, moving those to the monument area, because they'll get destroyed where they're at now. They don't, like Jackie said, no one knows where those trees came from, they're, it's an assumption or a guess that the Boy Scouts during the bike, like the bike locker parking thing, whatever they're called, I don't know.
Bike ride.
But thank you. Sounds like, sounds like Shaq.
Very good.
They, part of that project, they're guessing that maybe the Boy Scouts planted those, those two trees there. The, the other tree that's at the top of the hill, Angie had said that way back when, I guess when they were talking about the monument project, that, that tree was part of the plan, and they just, they didn't have money or money, I guess, to buy the tree, to plant the tree until recently. So according to Angie, whether or not that's a hundred percent factual, I have no idea, I wasn't involved in any of that, I'm just relaying what was discussed.
Money hasn't come from, from those offices.
But what I'm understanding, and what the minister said, that somebody wanted to work with their DPW on planting anything they want in the park, Ethan has the authority to do that?
I think he's working with the Park and Recs committee, but yes, he would have the authority, it's part of the subscription, it's part of the city's park.
Reclaim the maintenance.
Nothing is joining planted in the park.
I don't think so.
But there aren't any planted for anything, other than what has been done already, with the, bringing electricity down there. In the shed.
Any of the electrical that was done there, a lot of that was upgrades that was done, using some insurance, and that was done there, and we're still, although, where are you doing most of it?
But again, my concerns are, if we have a Parks and Rec community who are kind of overseeing that area down there, they may have had different recommendations for where they wanted it, whatnot, process would be them bring it to us, we say, yea, yea, yea. Instead, we have certain vigilance, just say, hey, I think this is a good spot, let's throw it over here, just saying that we've done wrong.
What do you think?
That's all I got. Appreciate it.
Any others? Call your first lady.
In your packet, I just put Dave Lucick's time sheet, just to give you an idea of what he's looking at, what he does when he's jogging around the village, whether it's moving signs, we're moving signs, talking to people about home applications, things, oh, this is his time sheet, just to give you an idea of what's on.
Question, something? I know there was discussion about a sign, and I'm assuming it's the one that has to deal with the billboard, if you will, on M15 down there by the real estate office, and that was getting asked to our attorney for opinion on that, didn't we ever get a response on what's going to happen?
It's only this one. We don't have any control over M15 and billboards.
Even though that part of it in the, in the village?
Correct. It's the state. The state handles that.
Thank you. Clarification?
Minister?
Some of the things that I would have talked about are further on the agenda, on the agenda. I don't really have anything. Working on a couple of conditional, alright, conditional use application, two rezoning applications. Two things will be on the planning commission agenda at the end of the month, one in the next month, and conditional use and rezoning will come to council at the August meeting, depending on what happens at the planning commission meeting.
Question? Side one.
Something's on somebody that, something they want to record.
Next one is the number 60, turn to closed session pending litigation. So move to go to closed session to discuss the Allen E.P.A.L., the Village of Goodrich, pending litigation. Support. Looking for support. Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Pardon. We have to. We have to. Yeah. Paul.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mr. McKenna to discuss the third party complaint against Genesee County Drain Commission Office. If you're support.
Dismissed.
Dismissed. That's what. Excuse me. I'm going to give you a motion to authorize Mr. McKenna to dismiss the third party complaint against Genesee County Drain Commission Office. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we have a third party complaint against Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office in this action. It was filed early on in the case, before there was any discovery. It's now clear from the depositions we've taken, that the nexus of the complaint against our co-defendant, Genesee County, is the undersides of the Wheelock Lockets Drain. And the liability claimed against the village arises from its structure, the dam, Mill Pond Dam. And the third party complaint, in its nature, is essentially, I am, if I am liable, as determined by the court, my liability is a result of conduct or acts on the part of the third party defendant, in this case, of Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office. There is no nexus between withholding water in the dam or letting water out of the dam and Genesee County's operation of the Genesee County Wheelock Lockets Drain. And I've been in discussions with Mr. Daniel Lesky, the attorney for Genesee County. He's filed a motion to dismiss. He didn't schedule a prayer, filed a motion to dismiss, and I told him that I've come to the council and asked for authorization to dismiss that, that third party complaint because of the facts as we now know them, and move forward with our defendants, both the golf club and Genesee County. With no, with no compliances between those defendants.
Motion to support. Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Pardon.
Yes.
Pardon. We have to. We have to. Yeah. Paul.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mr. McKenna to discuss the third party complaint against Genesee County Drain Commission Office. If you're support.
Dismissed.
Dismissed. That's what. Excuse me. I'm going to give you a motion to authorize Mr. McKenna to dismiss the third party complaint against Genesee County Drain Commission Office. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we have a third party complaint against Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office in this action. It was filed early on in the case, before there was any discovery. It's now clear from the depositions we've taken, that the nexus of the complaint against our co-defendant, Genesee County, is the undersides of the Wheelock Lockets Drain. And the liability claimed against the village arises from its structure, the dam, Mill Pond Dam. And the third party complaint, in its nature, is essentially, I am, if I am liable, as determined by the court, my liability is a result of conduct or acts on the part of the third party defendant, in this case, of Genesee County Drain Commissioner's Office. There is no nexus between withholding water in the dam or letting water out of the dam and Genesee County's operation of the Genesee County Wheelock Lockets Drain. And I've been in discussions with Mr. Daniel Lesky, the attorney for Genesee County. He's filed a motion to dismiss. He didn't schedule a prayer, filed a motion to dismiss, and I told him that I've come to the council and asked for authorization to dismiss that, that third party complaint because of the facts as we now know them, and move forward with our defendants, both the golf club and Genesee County. With no, with no compliances between those defendants.
Motion to support. Roll call, please.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. Yeah. Pardon.
Yes.
Dick.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
I'll report back.
The next one is the key policy that we brought up here a couple of months ago. I had time to look at it. The only thing that I want to make very clear is I have on here some suggestions, some discretion could be placed on this, and certainly not limited, limited to just the seven that I have listed. I guess I could read the ones that I have. No access to secured files, no duplication of keys, book giving or loaning of keys to others, entries after business hours, a complete explanation of entry submitted to the village office within 24 hours, no removal of any articles, return of keys upon completion of presidential term, return of keys upon council's request for negligence or abuse of this authority. It's careful going forward that we don't do anything that we're going to regret. So, anyone has anything they'd like to add to that? Any comments?
One of the suggestions, isn't it, Maggie, is where you have to fill out an explanation of why within 24 hours that you also should probably submit it to the council as well so that if something were to come up, it's not a use that she said, what you move.
So number four, you'd like to add to that, submit to the village office within 24 hours and council members? Yes. Anybody have anything else?
I'd like to restate that I'm not a favorer, but I checked with village attorney, thinks the status quo is good for protection of the documents that we have in the office, and I've checked with the insurance company, and although there's nothing written in our policy, they state that it's not a good idea. We've had problems with that before, and we're still looking at it.
And that's very true. I would just like to say that my beliefs are that the council should have keys. I also believe that we have to be careful not to abuse that key privilege. And once again, if it is abused any time, it has to be terminated, and that would be the last one, great kind of abuse that the key can be returned. Any other comments?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that the acting president should be granted access to any village keys at their discretion.
I would support that.
So the movie is passing this policy.
And also, he has on there, number four, of the council's.
I'm helping her side.
And I would support that, so if that, like, roll call, roll call.
Pardon.
Yes.
We have to. No.
My beliefs are that the council should have the keys. I also believe that we got to be careful not to abuse that, that key privilege. And once again, if it is abused any time, it has to be terminated and that would be the last one that. Create kind of abuse that, uh. Keys can be returned. Any other comments?
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that the head president should be granted access to any village keys at their discretion.
I would support that.
So we're already just passing this policy?
And also he has on there, uh, number four, um, the council member. And I would support that, so if that, if that will.
Pardon.
Yes.
McHenry? No. Maury?
No.
Dick?
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Uh, the next one is the fireworks policy. Senator, you would please?
This was brought to our attention by numerous persons within the village, um. Asking if we could do the same kind of a policy that that township has. Mr. McKenney and I worked on this policy. Um, sent it to you. What I'm asking for today is your approval to put it on the next council meeting as a public hearing. It is an ordinance, so it has to go through the public hearing and, uh, print it in the paper. So I'm just looking for authority to proceed.
Is there a copy of, of policy?
Did you send that in email? I didn't, I haven't received.
Thought I did. Well, maybe I didn't sign it because I wanted to have direction as to whether or not everybody was ever remembered with.
Uh, this is just like to go more or on writing the policy or implementing?
Holding a, a public hearing.
Oh.
Writing the policy.
Oh, okay.
So if I get that approval, then I'll send it out to you.
So you're done for a motion to hold a public hearing for fireworks policy?
I think we've been all like security.
Our consultant. And a motion that I've been on.
Well, I guess.
There's no objection. I don't think so.
I guess my, my question that I would have in the council is are you guys looking to have a policy on fireworks? Or are you like, no, it is not? Do you have a policy on fireworks? Would it blow them up that well?
That's what we're trying to do.
In the village?
We, we don't have a timeframe like they do in the township. The day before, the day of, the day after, certain holidays, that type of thing.
Township, that's something new too, that they've done.
We're finalized a couple years.
You just get along with that.
Okay, so then I'll rephrase the question if I may. Do we have an issue with the policy that we have now? Does this council have an issue with the policy that we have now?
There hasn't been one complaints.
Yeah, I have an issue. It's just going, that they're just being. You know, it's, it's a Wednesday evening and I have, I mean, these in my garage and I want to blow them up. Yeah, I get a problem with that. I'm, I'm sure it is.
Like fires, you can't just go boom, huh?
But I have, I have kids and I am, and I have a dog that gets terrified. I'm all about fireworks, but I think it should be, I think it should be limited. Other places are limited to.
And this is something where we're just go ahead and give her direct.
No, I understand.
And then let, let, let the residents speak. Well, in senses, I thought we'd kill about it.
Be best to have a public hearing. We know what's gonna happen.
So right now we're just okay to give administrator just the, the right to go ahead and. Go forward with it. Your business, Better Energy Corporation, if you would please.
I sent information or HR to the council members about, um, Rio and this energy corporation. Um, the school invited the township and the village to attend a meeting from the school to see if we could save money on our gas. Key gas bills, um, the school saves a substantial amount of money. Um, I don't have the final information as far as what it would save the village, but if it saves the village a couple hundred dollars, it saves the village a couple hundred dollars. Um, the reason it's on here is normally if you just have somebody else deliver your gas, you don't need to have a contract. This needs a contract. I don't sign contracts without the village's approval, so I'm looking for direction to continue to work on this. Um, and bring it back to council for direction as to whether or not we want to sign a contract. That's a two-year contract.
What was the, I'm sorry, what was the date on the, for that meeting? Let's see if we can be real. Did it immediately take place or it's?
It's our one meeting or we have a meeting with the, um, representative or the owner of this company and sales manager at the school.
Maury?
I would think what we need to know is, is, is the, as far as the, uh. All that thing is to be written up as far as, as the, the verbiage, which side of contract you signed it on and maybe what these things in there that we don't agree on or whatever.
Right, well, Mr. McKenney would review the contract, um, as we have them, reviews every kind of contract. The school has been doing this probably for four or five years now, um, started with. The last. I don't remember who that was in that picture. I don't remember who the last superintendent of the school was, but anyway, it started there, so they've been doing it for a number of years. And save us substantial amount of money with all the buildings that they have. Obviously, we have this, you know, so.
Hey, if you can save money wide up.
There's something we can do for that, as we say.
May not be a ton of money, but something better.
Paying like a dollar nineteen per, should be. Foot, whatever, we'd be paying seventy-nine cents, something like that. I mean, I will have those figures for you. A buck, a buck.
I think we should probably, uh, make a motion on this.
We're not gonna be directing you to sign anything this consensus. Keep moving forward to this.
Mr. Chairman, will you please look to save money for us?
I always do.
Might want to write a, run a blind door out.
Yeah, right.
Out of her meter.
No, no.
Well, if it does, I think consensus, it's usual, we all agree.
Yeah.
Uh, last part of our public comment.
Ms. Joyce, Ellen, um, when, I'm interested with the key policy, after a couple of months ago, when you guys first brought it up and the DPW Matt Main was here and he had mentioned that there was some damage done to the equipment in his DPW garage. And there was talk of maybe investigating that because there was only one person with a key and I was wondering if anything's been done about that or if he found anything out. It just kind of triggered my memory on the topic of key policy.
Will?
Good evening. Uh, I'm Thomas Allen. I live on Ridge Road. I have a question. Um, those microphones, do you guys ever use those? Because I'm kind of having a hard time here. This is my third meeting, so I was just wondering if you guys could use those microphones sometime so people could hear.
Does it work?
Yeah, it works. Thanks.
Glad to hear from you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
The question that I have was on that billboard that Mr. McKenney gave his opinion on. Did you submit an opinion in writing?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
Well, if not, I can FOIA it if you got one available. If you haven't or if you have, then I can do that. That's a request that I have to make on in record and put it in writing that can. I'm just asking if there was one in writing and we paid for him for that service, then it should be readily available for the public to have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh, motion to adjourn.
Any comments?
I have a comment on the billboard. Jennifer ran for judge and nobody in this village or township said a word. She was on there. She was pretty here in the village. She ran for judge and she used, nobody said a word.
Mr. President, if I may, um, the reason that I brought that up wasn't to, uh, go against any candidate that maybe run for office in a township. It was that a code enforcer stated that we had an issue and opinions. They turned them over. I just wanted to know the outcome of that.
Thank you.
So that was why I brought that up. I just wanted to see if there was an exposure, uh, to the discussion, uh, for the code enforcer.
I can sum that up.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the answer. Thank you.
Sir? Council, anything else? No, motion to.
Support.